Somebody's gonna make us think about whether it's unregistered, saying that they're working up here on the property. Our position is Mr. Hyde has that the Chaney Act act was interim until this was figured out. She was there.
Okay, if they don't want to do that, we can take it all to next month.
Okay. All right, we're gonna call this meeting to order.
All right. Oh, yes, oh, yes, oh, yes, this Honorable Commission is now in session pursuant to adjournment. God bless this country and God bless this county. Mr. Chairman.
For the puritan night, I've asked Mr. Roger Smith to come and pray and lead us. Step up to the podium.
Let's power heads, please. Lord, we just thank you for today. We thank you for these commissioners and all these people that's involved with this meeting and, and all the things to be discussed, Lord, that they would do it knowing that you're here, because we welcome you, Holy Spirit. I pray that you'd watch over us, watch over the commissioners, protect them, guide them, direct them. Lord, let them hear your voice and only vote and make decisions on behalf of you, Jesus, because you're the only reason we're here. We just thank you for all you do for us. Help, help us seek your kingdom first, Lord, in all things. I pray against strongholds, the works of the enemy, any assignments that's been put on anybody and in any commissioner. I pray against principalities, the forces of evil, and I pray for any infirmity that's trying to attack any of these commissioners or anybody that's making decisions tonight. I pray that you would bless them, Lord, everybody here. I pray for safety and I pray for your presence here tonight, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I'm gonna have the clerk call the roll. Chairman Hyde is, keep him in your prayers, his wife had broken her leg and he is taking care of her. Commissioners Bergdorf, Sullivan, Lamborth, and Winn are also absent this evening, so let's call the roll. Madam Clerk.
Each commissioner, record your presence.
All right, we have nineteen members present. Core on this thirteen, for a simple majority, and a two-thirds is obviously still sixteen. Before we approve our agendas tonight, I was requested to add a resolution, and I would like to add it to consent without object. It's declaring various items from the Juvenile Justice Center as surplus property, and that said items will be donated to Mid Cumberland HRA. My understanding is this was from the courthouse and that the county mayor did not have a chance necessarily to get that out quickly. Commissioner Shof.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I spoke with Mr. Hyde earlier today, and I think he has asked me, asked to be removed from, I believe it's under Legislative Item One, address appointments and removals from the commission appointed board. I think there was a resolution, I believe that was a resolution he wanted to have, that he had put forward and wanted to be discussed, but he'd asked for that to be removed, so.
Okay, well, without objection, we'll remove Resolution 2406-09 from Legislative Committee. And we had a, does the motioner and the seconder agree to that? Okay, any other changes to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, would be appropriate, would be in order to ask for an executive session sometime during Legislative?
I think, are you referring to Item Three on Legislative? Is that probably, or?
Yes.
Okay, that'd be fine. All right, without further objection, all in favor say aye. Oh, any opposed? All right, approval of the irregular agenda, motion for approval of consent agenda? Motion. All right, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right. Do I have a motion for approval of the minutes? Motion by Commissioner Palmeroy, second by Commissioner Schmidt. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Recognition of the public, if someone wouldn't mind handing me that. All right, I will remind the speakers, you have five minutes, please come up when I call you, state your name and address for the record. Please refrain, refrain from mentioning any commissioners or disparaging marks of, of anybody by, by name. You're definitely welcome to express your opinion otherwise. First up is Mr. Mike Bryan. And you have five minutes.
Now, now it can hear me, okay, good. Thanks for letting me speak tonight. My name is Mike Bryan, and I'm being considered for the library board. I'm married, have four children, three of them are married, five perfect grandchildren. I've lived in Gallatin for more than thirty years, have property and a home, and have started several businesses in Sumner County over the years, ranging from medical testing and home medical equipment to vending machines, property management, and real estate. We homeschooled our four children all the way through school, and we had the privilege of getting to use and enjoy the library's dozens of times during their school years. So I understand the blessing of having a safe place for my children and now grandchildren to go and learn and explore the world through books and other media. My understanding of the position on the Sumner County Library Board is one of serving the public in our county and therefore appreciating different viewpoints in all matters, developing policies for the five libraries, overseeing the, and supporting the library directors, among many other responsibilities. I would bring my tenacity and drive for serving and bringing honor to the county, as I have strived to do on the nonprofit ad hoc board where I've served for the past two years. I have a strong commitment to the county, having contributed my business knowledge and expertise to the Cumberland Crisis Pregnancy Center as a board member, vice president, and then president from 1999 to 2002. With these business experiences, I have developed a strong desire to prayerfully seek counsel. Is that my five minutes?
No.
There's a little bell. So I've developed a strong desire to prayerfully seek counsel and advice on what is best in every situation, and I'll bring this with me in order to keep the values of Sumner County at the center of the libraries. With my extensive policy writing background, I believe I understand and can help troubleshoot various situations and issues with employees and operations while contributing to county growth and increased integrity and accountability in the community. Hardworking spirit, work ethic, adaptability, and knowledge that will help bridge essential relationships to achieve the success of Sumner County libraries. One thing I've learned in all my years of being married, raising a family, living cooperatively in the community, building my own house, having a small farm, and being in business, having many employees, is that I need to first pause and pray and consider the values of the people I'm around and serving. In that, I'm ready to serve the public on the library board and help protect the values of Sumner County. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bryan. Next up, I have Bill Duncan. If you can step up to the podium and state your name and address for the record, Mr. Duncan. And you have five minutes.
Chairman, none of you all have a gun, do you? I paid to turn my back on you. Appreciate it. I'm Billy Coleman Duncan, and my wife and I live at 655 Douglas Lane. I don't know, I'm ashamed to tell you all, I don't know who my commissioners are, and that's a disgrace. But they took me from voting at Salem, where I spent a quarter to get gas, and I gotta go to Cotton Town now, and my old truck gets eight miles to the gallon, so I'm talking about six dollars or ten dollars. I can remember when Rufreese and Comitica Whale voted black folks at Sideview and gave them ten dollars and a half pint of whiskey. Now, that's been a long time, but it might not be a bad idea now with the people we got running. But for whatever, I'm up here to talk about the Tennessee Valley Authority and taking pride in doing a good job with the money that they have, rather than just talking about wasting money. You can load up a pickup truck full of hundred dollar bills and buy a piece of property. They went to Hartsfield, my uncle was the county mayor of Trazal County, and the three heads of Tennessee Valley Authority came in and talked to him, Ray Foley was his name, about putting a nuclear plant in Trazal County. They did. They told them what they wanted, they wanted a new high school, they wanted a new hospital, they wanted a four lane road to Lebanon, and when they got through, he's writing all this down on an envelope. And when they got through talking, they wanted to know when it could start, and they said, well, Virginia's got lunch for me, and I gotta go eat that, and when I get through with lunch, I can get started. And they were just happy as little boys in a mud pile. And about one o'clock, he got back, and they wanted to know when it'd start, and he said, at least fifteen minutes. He said, I wrote down this list you've got, and you've got two-hundred-and-twenty million dollars worth of stuff you want, and we're not gonna saddle the residents of Trazal County with it. Quick as you give me a check, I can get started. Well, it turned out to be a real fiasco, because they dug holes and buried new trucks in holes, rather than to say, we act like a bunch of young kids and idiots, and we're gonna spend all the money, six billion dollars, I understand, to do this nuclear plant, and they gave up on it. Now, now they're running around Sumner County, because they got an invite, and saying, we need to take this, and we need to take that, and we need to take whatever. If they take what they want, my farm is ruined. They're gonna go right down the middle of it with a hundred-foot rideaway and a cable, and I'm gonna be left where I can't get from one side of it to the other, and it's got livestock on it. Most farms now don't have any livestock. When I was ten years old, you go from Gallatin to Rivergate, and some of the prettiest property in the world was down there with livestock. The Comers owned the first farm across Masker Creek, and they said they had a thousand acres. I can imagine that they did. But for whatever reason, here we are, talking about this. I've got cows out there that I've raised and raised their mothers, and I'm looking at them, I love those cows. They do a good job for me, they make me think that God's still running things instead of TVA. But here we are with whatever they're gonna do, there are three routes, the one that crosses us is the longest and the most expensive, and they're doing this so they can get to Bill's Route's property. Bill's seventy-nine years old, it won't be one thing done with that property until he dies, but once he dies, it probably won't take fifteen minutes to get wires run off there. And that's, like I say, I'm up here talking to you all, asking you if it's any way possible to let them pick out the cheapest road possible, and I know everybody wants to drive a Rolls-Royce, but somebody's gotta drive a Humvee. And from that, that's, we're up here looking at things, listening to TVA, they say that they're gonna negotiate. When they negotiate, they give me a fair price, and if I don't like it, that's just real sorry, because that's what the negotiation is. If I look it up in the dictionary, negotiating is for Deborah, give me a prize, and me talking about a prize and getting together somewhere in it where it can satisfy both of us. They just throw it out there for eight dollars an acre and say, this is it, you got it, and, and be nice with it.
Mr. Duncan, we thank you for your time.
I appreciate you, all of you all, letting me talk, and I appreciate you looking at it and saying that somewhere or other, there's a, a place where honest folks and, and commissioners can say, we've had a, not very long ago, several years ago, Janice and I had a will made, and we had a trust made, I've got four grandchildren, and we decided that we was gonna pay college education for the four of them.
Mr. Duncan.
We got one of them through college. The other three, one starts.
Mr. Duncan, thank you for your time.
One of them starts at Ole Miss in September, and in that trust, they wind up getting the money we got. Now, those children, that's the only thing in this world.
Mr. Duncan, we thank you for your time, sir. Appreciate you, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Don't get your shoe wet.
All right, next we have, I guess, Ms. Connie Ramsey. If you wouldn't mind coming up and state your name and address for the record, please. You have five minutes, please. Yes.
Sorry. I'm Connie Ramsey. I live at 260 Flynn Lane, and I'm here today to talk about TVA and their proposal to run a cable through our property. I live on land that was a land grant to my family. My grandfather built the house that I live in. My mother was born in the house, and my dad died there. I live in that house today. It took my grandfather ten years to build the house, and when he finished it, on the front step, it has the, his name and the date that it's completed, and that was 1904. My mother had lived there her whole life, and like I said recently, I've been able to go back and, and live there. My daughter and my grandchildren love the farm, and they dream of coming back there someday to live. TVA is proposing to run a cable, a large cable, through my property. It's coming in on the north side of the property, cutting it completely in half, and coming out the south side of the property. The cable is running within two-hundred yards of my house, my back door. Every year, the blue herons come back to my farm, there's a pond on the back, near where the cables are gonna be running, and they nest on this pond and raise their babies. They mate for life, they're like eagles, they use the same nest over and over, and they just remodel and have their families. I know that they've done this for thirty years. The cable is gonna run within seventy-five feet of this nesting place for them. These birds, we have discovered, are protected by a federal treaty that was issued in 1918. TVA has several different routes that they can use to accomplish the same goal. Most of them are shorter than the route that they want to take out towards Cotton Town and through my property. I'm asking you to consider a resolution to help us with this issue, and I thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Ramsey. Next up, Mr. Scott Goodwin. And after Mr. Goodwin, we have Mr. Freeman, if you would be ready to come up after Mr. Goodwin is complete.
There was another neighbor that wanted to still speak, can he still sign up?
That'd be fine.
Does he need to sign the sheet?
Well, he can come up last.
My name is Scott Goodwin. I live at 592C Douglas Lane. We bought our property out there in 2016, our goal, and I spoke to several of you folks last week, and I appreciate the time. We dreamed it was gonna be our forever home, we had prerequisites, like I'm sure a lot of you folks have, which is, I wanted seclusion, I wanted country, I wanted woods, I wanted privacy, I wanted no TVA power lines, that was on my list, I wanted no railroad track directly on my property, I wanted no flood zone directly on my property, I wanted the ability to just live in peace and have a wonderful setting. We've built our house, custom house, and if this happens, I'm directly on Route Eighteen, and it would go directly through my property, I've got two lots, it'll be right between my lot in the back and my house in the front, and on my property alone, it would eliminate approximately five-hundred feet of trees and woods, completely. There's my privacy, I'm not talking about part of them, they would be completely gone, and then it would continue on for hundreds of feet, both directions, in my view, because it's continuing to be a tree row all the way through there. And those trees, me and my wife love the birds, a lot of you guys may, a lot of you guys may not, it's one of our hobbies, something we enjoy. There is a Protected Bird Tree Act, as Connie had mentioned earlier, there's a large number of birds that nest in my trees, from red-headed woodpeckers to, I've got a American woodcock in the Waterway area there, that their habitat would be completely knocked out. I do think that comes into play to be in good stewards with our natural resources, our landscape, to take care of the wildlife as much as possible. There's farms, I'm not a farmer, we have nineteen acres, but there's several farms, a couple of them have spoken already, there's others that would go directly through their property, could have a negative impact on them from farming, and that's getting to be more and more difficult, finding fresh vegetables if you haven't grown them yourself, or meat, and et cetera, and et cetera, that way, life is going away by the moment, and I think we should do everything we could, can, to protect that as well. The impression I have from TVA, if they decide to take our route, they will come to negotiate, but the negotiation is, my understanding from conversation is, they're gonna try to propose giving you what they consider some type of a payment for the rental access of that actual land. Your house don't come into play, the rest of your property don't come into play, and you can read online, it could depreciate value, I'm not saying it will, I don't know, up to fifty percent. If you're off of it, could be fifteen to twenty percent. At a minimum, the pool of people that would buy your property is less. If they did this to me, my dream is gone, I'd probably wanna go somewhere else, and I should be able to make a lateral move without losing a substantial amount, have to have a smaller house, less property because of something some entity has chosen to do. I understand progress, I think respective citizens should be taken into consideration, that should be first and foremost, and I look on TVA's websites, pages, their commitment, and I, I, I'm gonna trust that they're gonna do that, their commitment is, they're gonna look out for the best interest and have the least impact on citizens as possible, homeowners, I'm gonna trust that's what the intent is. They say the goal is to impact the least amount of environmental concerns, whether it's wildlife, landscape, wiping out trees, I'm gonna trust that they're gonna do that, but if they are one-hundred percent committed to that, there's no reason to take any other path and to stay on 109, closer to 109, there's no trees, there's not a large number of homeowners. It's a very limited number of people, and I wouldn't wanna be impacted even there. I do urge you guys to vote for this resolution, I know it has no teeth, it has nothing whatsoever, ever, other than saying the people that represent us have our best interests and say, hey, TVA, we know you're coming, we know progress happens, we ask you to take the shortest, least impactful scenario as possible. I will tell you, I started getting a petition two days ago, I have a large number of people in that area that have signed off on it as well. Anybody in here that has not made comments, go on the TVA page and do comments that you're against it as well, we're asking them to stay off of Leg Eighteen.
Thank you, Mr. Goodwin. I will say, next up is Mr. Freeman. I don't think there's gonna be any opposition to this, and so if you guys have comments or just feel free to come speak, but don't, don't, I, I don't think you're gonna have a lot of opposition to this, if you keep it brief.
My name is Jerry Freeman, I'm probably one of the newest residents, I've been here since November. We looked at.
We looked at, oh, I'm sorry, I'm Jerry Freeman, 259 Flynn Road. And we purchased and bought the home in November of last year. We looked at 75 homes. We're in Nashville, south, east, west, north. We settled up here because the people are very nice and it's a great location. We avoided 15% of the properties we looked at because it had power lines on it. And we're advised by our real estate agent to not buy a house near or adjacent to a power line. So this is very upsetting for us to buy the property, purchase what we did, and do it. What they are going to do, and I'm sure they're going to pass it, holds some weight. However, I work with state agencies. I work with local agencies. In power, they do a lot of stuff. And sometimes they do it against even local residents. I advise everybody in this room, talk to your congressman, your senators, get on the internet, Twitter, Facebook, and let everybody else know what is going on here. And that will help these people, empower them, and provide more force for us to do something against a mega entity within the state.
Thank you. Next up is Lydia. I am not going to attempt to say your last name, because I can't read it very well on the sheet. So if there's a Lydia that signed to speak at Lawrence Town Road. Lydia Vitale? If you state your name and address for the record, please. If you can speak in the microphone and state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Vasil Stramchuk. I'm here in the United States since 78. I came from Romania a long time ago. And I got married here in the United States. I got three daughters and grandchildren. I was working hard as a machinist all my entire life, and my wife too, different job. We tried to save the money. In all my life, I took about three times vacation. The rest of the vacations, I work. I sell my vacation to the company, and they pay me so I can save the money. I try to save the money to buy some quite nice place where I can live for my retirement. And I would say this, this is place, I want to live my retirement quiet and ease in peace, to have, to enjoy my life, the rest of my life with my children and grandchildren. And I think this is the place that I wanted to live until God would keep me on this earth. So I think there would be a better way to go with that power line instead of residential. So that would be better to go maybe like 109 or whatever, it's a shortcut, not that long way. And I thank you, I appreciate it, and thank you very much. And I please beg you, in Jesus' name, to not to go over our properties. Please, thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Michelle Carrier. If you'd come up, please, and state your name and address for the record. You have five minutes.
Hi, my name's Michelle Carrier. I live at 311 Douglas Lane. And I'm here for the same reasons that y'all spoke about, and thank you for speaking. I just learned about this meeting and learned that I would be speaking, so I'm not really prepared. But I'll just tell you from my heart. Moving out there has been a dream of mine and my husband's. And we're so thankful and feel like we kind of landed in heaven. And we've only been there four years. And to find out that something like this could happen is really hard to understand when, as all of you have said, the route down 109 really would impact very few people, I believe. Now, I don't know that for sure, but it sure seems like it. And I can't imagine, you know, how all of us feel that we are going to lose property value. It's kind of, everybody knows that. We're going to lose that. We're going to lose the whole purpose of being out there to feel like we're in, you know, this beautiful, idyllic place. Why in the world would you do that to people and not just put it on 109, that we can all just drive by and look at the ugly power line and know that it's just part of our reality? But to me, it's a no-brainer. You know, don't do this to people that have worked hard for their dreams and have had family farms. And I mean, we planned on passing this place down to our son and our grandchildren. And it's just kind of a rotten deal. And I really appreciate you all taking into consideration how many people this is going to affect and how few people it could affect going down 109. And so I appreciate the fact that you'll consider our circumstances and really make the right decision for us if you can. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Ms. Charlena Ommeler.
Hi, my name is Charlena Ommeler. I live at 143 Rule and Circle, Hendersonville, Tennessee, 37075. And I'm here to respectfully request that you say no to the recommended library board appointee. I've, several members of this commission and I have requested a list of library board applicants. And the information I received, it came up with eight. And then I'm aware that a list of 36 were sent to you today. But that list is also still incomplete because I am aware of others who have applied. And the decision to not consider somebody in an open meeting either happened unilaterally or behind closed doors, but there were many other people that applied to be on the library board before the person who is up for it today. So I would respectfully request that this commission require that process to be fixed before just allowing it to continue the way that it is. The second thing that I'd like to talk about is, and I don't know if it's going to be on today's agenda because the pro tem is the one serving as chair tonight, but the recommendation and resolution for education committee chairmanship. A chairman of any governing body is appointed by the governing body members to represent it. For the sakes of, for the sake of committees of the commission, what that person does is they gather information in order to come up with the agenda. They represent the committees on the legislative committee. And they are the voice for that committee in order to provide a unified message. The committee has said during their committee meeting that they want a different chairman, and they approved a different chairman. And I would hope that the chairman of this commission will respect that because it's not really for anybody else outside of that body to determine who would be the voice of the group of people that are on the committee. So if that is a decision that is made today, then I hope that it is to honor what was done at the education committee because it is their choice who is the chairman of their committee. Thank you.
Next up is Ms. Rebecca Goddard.
My name is Rebecca Goddard, and I'm at 2339 U-Hope Road in Hendersonville. The library selections, the library board selections are an absolute example of the chaos that some of the committee, some of the citizens of this county are trying to throw out to make it look like y'all aren't doing your jobs. This could have been done, there's been extensively qualified citizens that have applied for the library board. But the chaos, the Tasmanian devil, the idiocy that has been allowed to run rampant for the last few months is disgusting. And it's time to do your jobs and vote people in. My intention is to come up here and let all of you know that the work you are doing for this county is seen and valued despite what a fake county commission page written by a person with an obsessive hatred for Sumner County and the citizens in it. The real taxpayers who you all represent and work for appreciate all you're doing and the lawfare and warfare you're being forced to endure due to a small echo chamber of elitist malcontents who hate the hard-working taxpayers of Sumner County. Many of us, most of us, appreciate the extensive grueling work the budget committee is putting in and to give our county employees a much-deserved raise, also while not increasing taxes, the budget or raising taxes. You're appreciated. You are seen. To have a commission that has had to fix and maintain all the previous commissions maliciously ruined for the taxpayers and wasting our money, while the fake commission page and the echo chamber of malcontents elitists in Sumner County are trying very hard to distract and deflect from the corruption of the previous commission and the willful neglect of the county taxpayer assets and making deals that would literally, is literally theft of the taxpayer. We appreciate your service, your hard work, and doing what a public servant is elected to do, represent the people. The elitists in Gallatin tonight are ignoring, and most likely giving the metaphoric finger to the citizens of its city. While there are few citizens creating chaos and acting like petulant toddlers to distract from the loss of their last election, remember, those that are calling for your heads on a platter do not care about $410 million in debt, did not care about the Comer Barn and the worst deal for a taxpayer that you could possibly ask for. They do not care that they are disturbing the county while, and...
Ms. Goddard, if you don't mind sticking to agenda topics for tonight, that'd be great. Thank you.
So I just want to, I appreciate the budget committee and not allowing our public servants to waste our time and money.
Thank you. Next up, we have Rebecca. I'm not going to, I'm unable to read the writing on this at, I think it's Lawrence Town Road, or about the TVA. If you could come up and state your full name and address for the record, I appreciate it.
My name is Rebecca Sandu. Address is 199 Lawrence Town Road, Gallatin, Tennessee. And as previously mentioned by several individuals, I am here as well for the issue regarding the TVA power lines that are proposed. My concern, as others have voiced, is that it will cause many, many things, numerous implications to our properties. I have been a real estate agent for Sumner County for 20 years. And though we can't technically steer our clients, we can sure give them all the facts about things that are placed on properties, et cetera. And high-voltage power lines are not going to increase our property value. It will decrease our property value. I'm very glad to see Mr. Duncan here. Two years ago, there was a property that I had clients that was his, and my clients purchased the property that he owned on Douglas Lane. And they are very satisfied where they are. And this would be one of the items that would be of great consideration and resale value. And it would be to our detriment. And I, living on Lawrence Town Road, is the street following Douglas Lane. And it would implicate some of the properties off of that road. And that would also decrease our property values for which we are not, we're just not interested in that happening. Besides that, I likewise moved to Gallatin last year with my family on Lawrence Town Road. And for the very many reasons that have already been mentioned, to have a larger piece of land, to have peace, to have, you know, the ability to have maybe some animals. We currently have close to 1,000 beehives. And when you have high-voltage power lines, it affects the bees. It affects the behavior of the bees. And as we all know, bees are very important for pollination for crops, for many things that happen in this country. And so I really do ask that you guys reconsider this and for it to be placed in other areas that are maybe not as populated residentially and that you would take all of our discussions this evening and vote against this. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. There was, was there one more person that wanted to speak? Or if you wouldn't mind coming up and stating your full name and address for the record, please.
David Patton, 592A Douglas Lane. Three basic points. One, removal of trees for the power line, the construction access, and to maintain the power lines is disruptive of the land around and, of course, property value. And then I just learned about the bees. I do have 25 hives of bees within probably 30 feet of the proposed line, which is the proposal of number 18, I think. And I agree with the others that if they go to number 12, which is down Highway 109, it'd be a lot less disruptive, a lot more friendly for us citizens. Appreciate your concern and help.
Thank you very much. All right, that concludes public comments.
Mr. Chairman, would it be inappropriate to suspend the rules? Can I go ahead and take a vote on this and respect these citizens? I actually, I would vote, I would make the motion to suspend the rules.
All right, we have a motion to suspend the rules. We have a second by Commissioner Teichner. 16 votes will confirm that. All of you say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're going to go ahead and take a vote. If you can put that on the board, Madam Clerk. Okay, Commissioner Reed?
Thank you. I just want to make a comment. This TVA, this proposal would go, run through property that was part of the Revolutionary War grant that was given to my ancestor, eighth great-grandfather, I believe. I have relatives who live on this property, although I have no land there and have no interest, financial interest in the property. So therefore, I have no conflict of interest. And I will be voting yes on this. Thank you. All right.
Can you make it brief? All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say one thing. I had several folks reach out to me that couldn't be here tonight, and they were in agreement with all the citizens. And I just want to remind everybody, I don't think we're going to have any question here. But, I mean, literally, the bosses are out there and the folks who serve are here. And that's how it should always be. And I think they should never have to be so passionate and worried. I think we should always have their back. And if we don't, we need to walk away from these posts right now because it's just null and void. I support them 1,000%.
Thank you, Commissioner Teichner. Commissioner Klein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'll be brief. Looking at this from a development standpoint, there is absolutely no reason that this, this power line couldn't and shouldn't follow along 109. That's a, that's a public right of way to take people's property in eminent domain for this, to shorten it, is, in my opinion, wrong. And as chairman of the planning commission, I think we would agree with the people who have spoken tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Klein. I will add that the county commission, three years ago, did a resolution like this, the similar resolution as a template. And we were successful in having the TVA, by doing this, change their route to be the least invasive for the residents. So I pray and hope that we'll have the same effect here tonight. So Commissioner Becker.
Yeah, just wanted to clarify some of the comments that were made toward the end. The decision for this route is not, is not, like, we aren't the ones making the decision for the route. It's TVA within itself. This resolution that we're about to vote on is, is be, encourage TVA to go the other route. So I just wanted to, I know we all know that. I just wanted to make sure that was clear to everyone in the chamber, so. And with that, I'll make a motion to approve this.
Put that on the board.
Each commissioner records their vote.
All right, motion carries unanimously. We're going to move on to report of the chair. Your veteran service report is attached, as well as should be your financial statement memo from the finance director and finance department, items one and two. Item number three under report of the chair, Chairman Hyde, again, unfortunately, could not be here this evening. He has asked me to read a statement in his stead that I'm going to read, that he would have, he wrote. have, he wrote for this. Chairman Hyde states, "During the June meeting of the Education Committee, a matter was brought to the attention of the group, which was not on the agenda and of which I was not aware. The issue happened to be the change of chairmanship. I had not been made aware of the decision to come forward with this change. During my tenure of 31 years and before, as far as I can remember, this has never occurred. The rules leave a great deal to be desired and probably need to be revised to address any future issue of this nature. Although I believe that a committee should have a right to choose its chairman, this comes with a need to carefully revise rules and provide guards to the good order of a committee. Without this, committees could be changing leadership at each decision made by a chairman. This would be disruptive to the committee process as well as the entire commission. The legal team has asked that I give my opinion as to the understood length of a chairmanship. I have chosen not to give my view on this issue because it would not be a lasting fix to a serious problem. Instead, I am directing that the commission move forward in the following manner. One, the Legislative Committee should immediately work on revising rules pertaining to this issue so that a clear path of managing this issue is available to this body in the future. Two, those revisions and new rules will be brought forward for debate and, if necessary, revision by the full County Commission. Three, I agreed entirely with Commissioner Jerry Becker that no one person such as chairman should make unilateral decisions. Therefore, the only sensible way to resolve this and a future rule issues is by the body, which transcends all others in this county, the County Commission. Four, therefore, the County Commission will vote to confirm any such changes which are unclear. Five, the Commission will vote to confirm the decision of the Education Committee." It was a desire of Chairman Hyde that, given the dispute of what happened, that ultimately this body with 13 votes confirms or denies anything that happens. And Chairman Hyde has asked that we either confirm the decision of the Education Committee or deny that decision. So a confirmation would essentially, I believe the motion made in Education was a two-part motion, which was debated, that it was not a proper motion, the fact that it removed Chairman Brown and appointed Commissioner Becker as chairman in one motion without proper adequate public notice, which is what Roberts Rules requires for that in that instance. But again, the will of the body can do what it wants to with a majority vote. So Commissioner Hyde had just asked that we go ahead and take this up as part of his letter, so I guess I would entertain a motion at this point to confirm or deny. So we have a motion by Commissioner Pomeroy. Is there a second to that? Or by Commissioner Brown? Is there a second to that motion? Is there, did I hear a second over here? Second by Commissioner Teichner. The, the motion that Mr. Hyde requested is that the Commission will vote to confirm the decision of the Education Committee, is what he specifically wrote. So when we take the vote, an affirmative vote would be to confirm that decision. And obviously, if that vote fails, then that decision would be overturned and Commissioner Brown would be the chairman for the duration of his term, which is two months, is basically how that would work, so. Commissioner Jung, I believe, Janong, I believe you're first in the queue.
So I was not around the night that this happened, unfortunately. My husband was ill in the hospital. But I had some concerns, and it has to do with why this happened. I wasn't on the Education Committee, and I, there, several of the members for the Education Committee are not here tonight. And I listened to the audio of the meeting, and it seemed that some of the allegations or concerns were not well defined. And, and of course, some of them had their back to the audio, so I listened and I thought, well, it didn't seem like, it seemed to me that there was words that were made, allegations, let's just put it on the table, that Commissioner Brown was not doing his job, or he had done some things that they disagreed with. So I started to look at what they said, and it concerned me because I thought of the word precedent. And so when you begin with a precedent, that if you are on a committee and you are a chairman, or it could happen to any chairman, that you are unhappy with what has happened or something happened, then it would be appropriate to discuss it with the committee over a period of time and not just throw it at somebody at the, at a very quick way. So the precedent would be, if you voted for it, then any person that served as a chairman, for example, I'll use Mr. Rogers as an example. He's a chairman of my committee, and if I didn't like something he was doing, well, then I could start getting my group together and say, you know, hey, we got to get rid of him because I don't like how he does, you know, whatever. I wouldn't do it to him, but I'm just saying, that's an example. But I don't understand the allegations. So, Mr. Chairman, I would like you to ask the commissioner that brought that forward in that meeting, what is the issues? Because I don't get what the issues are, and I don't want to vote on something that I don't understand.
My understanding is, I think Commissioner Schmidt, you brought that forward in Education, so I don't, I don't know the reason for the, I think it'd be good for transparency purposes that there's a concern or for the removal, if you'd be willing to, to share, or, okay.
First off, these were concerns that many parents had over a period of time. Unfortunately, with the latest, with the appropriating the books for White House Intermediate and other schools, kind of brought a lot of this to light the last committee meeting. The issue with that was, is it started, citizens had reached out to me, and again, I specified this during the committee, that this was not directed at Mr. Brown, but there was a Facebook post made by a citizen that said that Don Schmidt was giving Dr. Langford, or somewhere along those lines, I've got the screenshot, that was giving him a blank check for pornography in our schools. After talking with several people throughout my district and family, just to get a better understanding of what was going on with that vote, you know, it just spiraled. More people saw that evidently, the power of social media gets shared around, whether it's up for an hour or whether it's up for two, three hours. You know, I was unhappy with some of the commissioners I spoke with that asked me what was going on, that, you know, kind of just swept it under the rug, in my opinion, saying, well, it was, it was only up for an hour. Doesn't matter whether it's up an hour, it's up three hours. I see this, I've seen this play out with school board candidates, and I see the effect that it has on their families and their lives. So when we came to the Education Committee, I made a motion for Mr. Becker to replace Mr. Brown. I've worked with Mr. Becker on the Budget Committee last year. Him and I don't agree on everything, but we have a respectful back and forth, which I appreciate. Then someone suggested I file an ethics complaint. I said, well, why an ethics complaint? One suggestion was reckless behavior. Well, several months ago, I don't know the exact timing, it's public record, and there's public record requests being made for that information, which I'm, have nothing to hide on that, it's all there in transparency. There was an issue of a school with safety concerns. There was issues made, there was concerns brought forth by Dr. Langford on this email thread to, and I'm not, don't, don't want you to take his exact words because I don't have the emails in front of me, but basically, please stand down, you know, take this off the agenda, which was the school in question, security concerns. So I had looked at it, and I believe, you know, I'm not putting words in Mr. Becker's mouth, and he can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe he asked Mr. Brown to please take it off too, that something, this was not going to come up for another several months. I had tried reaching out to him on the email. I said, I, I cannot, in good faith, basically, I didn't feel comfortable with seeing this on the agenda because gosh forbid someone's out there wanting to do any harm to our students, our teachers, our SROs in that school is watching this all unfold and seeing points of vulnerability. That concerned me. So I asked, you know, I said, this has got to be taken off the agenda. Well, I'd never heard back from Mr. Brown on that email thread. Commissioner Lambeth had responded, and you know, again, he's not here, so I'll just say that he basically saw the importance of taking that off the agenda. I even had a school board member reach out to me, and she was appreciative of, you know, getting this off the agenda. This was something that I felt like was being politicized, is something that I was concerned with, because I know a lot of people that work in the schools, that I felt that their safety could be at risk, because if someone hell-bent on destruction is watching this and sees this all unfold and it's still on the agenda, what other schools are we putting in harm's way? Because someone out there that wants to do harm could have some ideas. This was my biggest fear, but I say all that because he never responded to that email, so no one knew where we stood. So I took it upon myself to contact the IT Department, which is also public record, and I also submitted that request to the attorneys to show that that call was made, to have them take those pictures down, because it concerned me. This ain't about Republicans or Democrats to me. This is about lives. And, you know, this is not something, I think people need to understand something. This is not something that we all got together and ganged up on him and didn't like the way he ran his committee. This is about citizens and parents that are concerned for their safety of their children that get up and have to watch the news every day of different shootings. So why give someone hell-bent on destruction even more ammunition, pardon the pun, to perhaps do something? And I, you know, when that came out, you know, at the last committee meeting, because again, I had no intentions of bringing that all up. It was about the books and about the parents' concerns that, you know, look, the school board's an elected body to make those decisions with books. I was not going to sit here and look at a list of books and ratings and try to judge on what was good or what wasn't good. That's not my, that's overstepping, government overreach, and it's overstepping my bounds. So, you know, all this came to light. The citizens have a right to bring their concerns forth. When a citizen brings their concerns to me, I don't look at whether it's an email or a phone call, whatever it is. I don't try to figure out what their political leanings are one way or the other. I try to direct their concerns as a person, because I'm here to represent not just one, two people or a group, an interest group, and others, I've taken the heat out there, and that's fine. My, you know, that's part of the politics, and I'll take that heat every day, but I'll stand up for what's right. And what was right is taking a stand and listening to those citizens last meeting. They have concerns, they feel neglected, they feel ignored, they feel disrespected. I've, you know, I've had people, I'll use Dr. Langford. I mean, him and I don't agree politically, I'm sure, on a lot of stuff, but it's always been a civil discussion. And I know there's people out there that are going to be lighting up social media tonight, making all these different accusations, and that's unfortunate. But we have to be professional here, and we have to think of the citizens, we got to think of the parents, the teachers in our schools. And this was not a good idea, bottom line. That's why that was brought in. That was a big concern, and it's just been festering for months. And, you know, we, that's what it is, you know, and I know that's not a popular decision, and I'm not going to, you know, I'm not going to apologize for, you know, doing the right thing. You know, it's, it is what it is. And I hate, and like I said, I hate that it came to that, but again, you know, it just was not a good idea. And, you know, once the, you know, when they wanted me to file, you know, an ethics complaint, that's why that part was brought up. The books just kind of put the cherry on top, if you will, of the whole thing. And, you know, for the public to understand, again, why Mr. Becker, I wanted him up there is because, again, him and I have worked together. I've known Commissioner Becker even before I was elected on different issues that I disagreed with him on, but he always had the courage and the tenacity, you know, to face it and say, here's why I did what I did. Not talk down to the constituents, not talk down to, like, their voices didn't matter. Their voices matter out there, regardless of where they lean one way or the other. And we have a job to do, and that job is to protect the citizens, and that's what I did. And, you know, I just, I think in closing, because I know, I'm trying not to go on, but I think in closing that this decision by the Education Committee should be grandfathered in, and the respect and the will of the Education Committee must be followed, because if it's not, it's a slap in the face to the citizens tonight that brought their concerns for many months and endured many months of, you know, headaches with this.
Thank you, Commissioner Schmidt. Did, Commissioner Janong, did that answer your question as far as the reasoning?
So, thank you. So my question is, I went back and I reviewed quite a few meetings to see, you know, what, I know what they're talking about, but I can go, I went all the way back to when I first became a commissioner, and I started reviewing the meetings to see what was the precedent of what was going on. So in October of 2022, an issue came up with similar allocations for the school system, and it was, was requested to go back. And one of the commissioners, and I don't want to say the name, I, I believe it's number 21, I'm for sure, so had said that they were talking about equipment, and it had to do with the panic buttons. And they brought up that the panic buttons didn't work, and I nearly fell out of my chair, because I thought, well, that's like yelling fire in a theater. So all the people in the community got upset and got scared, rightfully so. And so it bothered me that on, you know, I'm thinking on one hand, we've got one person here that brought to the attention of the school, an issue that should be fixed, it should have been fixed years ago. And then I have somebody else who's saying that we got panic buttons don't work, and we have other people that have brought up unsafe things. So my question is, is when people are trying to help and make things happen and change things, are we going to be penalized for bringing forward issues that need to be addressed? And so is, is one wrong, is the other one wrong? And I also think, because I think that's quite unfair. And so then you have this thing with social media. I told you all not to get on social media. Well, I didn't follow my rule because something happened in Gallatin, and I posted a picture, and I was checked. And so somebody in this body posted a video of me, and that other person called me a two-faced. I don't care. You can call me two-faced all day. I don't care. But my point is, social media should not be your platform for leadership. And so are we going to set a precedent so that we can't bring forward things that are critical to the body and feel like, you know, if we do something like this, are we going to get kicked off our committee? Are we going to get in trouble? I don't know. It's not funny, Mr. Pomeroy. So I feel like, you know, I wanted to bring both sides just so that we could think about it. I don't know. I'm not on the committee, I don't day-to-day work with them on the committee, but I do think it's a little bit unfair, because we have this happen, and then we have other things happen, other people have said things, and then here we are. But I do think there is some retaliation attached to this. So those are my words, and I don't think it's a good idea. I really think it sets a bad precedent, and that's all I have to say. And you can quit laughing.
Thank you, Commissioner Janong. Next up is Commissioner Harrison.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I just want to be clear, parliamentarily, since this was not approved on the regular agenda, we would be adding this to our agenda, and would that require a two-thirds vote? I, I know Commissioner Hyde asked it to be added, but we did not add it prior to approval.
Okay. Speaking of the law director, I believe it would be a two-thirds vote to add this to the agenda properly, since this was brought up during the chairman's report.
Then I'll move to add it to the agenda now.
We have a motion by Commissioner Harrison to add it to the agenda. We have a second by Commissioner Shof. Is there any discussion on that motion? Do you? You're speaking to the amendment table?
Yes. Just a second. Mr. Chairman, uh...
You just wait a second till we get you in the queue. Can you wait a second, Commissioner Tishman, your light's on.
Mr. Chairman, it may be, it may feel like, oh, well, this would be something that, you know, we've got to pass this, we've got to not, on how we're going to vote on this, and we think, well, it wasn't part of the agenda. And I normally, I would be 100% against anything being added to the agenda. I don't like that, that process, I just don't like it. But, in this case, we're not dealing with money, with money, for one thing, so the citizens are not hurt by a money-spending proposition, but however, contrary to that, they are hurt by not allowing this to be spoken on and solidified by their governing body as a whole. Many of the Education Committee members are not even here, but it's very important that we, that we don't set a precedence of doing something and then don't have a discussion about it here, because we've talked about everything else. I respect everybody in here, 100%, I think that everyone should be heard, because we represent the folks out here. And so I plead with each of you to vote 100% to put it on here, and that way we can vote however we're going to vote. I mean, if you want it to be, if you want it to stand, if you don't want it not, if you want it to not stand, whatever that is, it's fine. Do your will on that. But I ask you to vote for this to be on the agenda, because I think it's the right thing for the people to get to see how this plays out. It's never happened before in the history of the United States, I don't think, I think Mr. Hyde said. Thank you.
All right. Is, are you in the queue, Mr. Schoeff, for the adding to the agenda, or you want to wait till, all right, we're going to, without any objection, we'll take the vote to add this with a two-thirds vote. Let's put it on the board.
Each commissioner records your vote.
All right, the motion carries, so we will proceed with this, with the discussion. Commissioner Schoeff, you're next in the queue.
Yeah, so, I got a few thoughts on this one. And I apologize, I will try to be short. So the first thing, I, I've got to look at the real reason why a thing happened, I don't know that I necessarily buy all of the explanation we heard earlier. You know, several items were listed for why this was brought forward, but we got to look at the timing of it. The timing of it happened right after, you know, a spat on social media. So, I agree with Commissioner Janong and her commentary on social media, and I don't think that this is the way to handle, those types of spats are going to happen, and if we start taking shots at each other in, in policymaking organizations after those, then, you know, we're already in a bit of a, kind of a spiral of angst, I think everybody knows that. And this is just one more step down that way. Now, I realize, as I was kind of writing down this note to myself, that, you know, I don't want to be a hypocrite, so I did this once to myself when I got mad about some social media posts to Mr. Nguyen, and, you know, I imposed a time limit where he couldn't speak in a, in a committee meeting. And I thought I was right at the time to do it, because I, there was some factually incorrect information, and there were some things that were being cherry-picked, but now looking at that and seeing this, I, I just want to, you know, I realize that I helped step us down that path, and we're, and I would like for us to stop. That's, that's my, my general commentary on this. Now, and we got to be honest with ourselves, this didn't have to do with any of the other policy, it didn't have to do with any other stuff, we're mad at each other about stuff on social media, and we're taking shots at each other. That's what happened here, no other reason for it. Now, so I'm going to set that aside and talk about the, what I, what I understand at least to be the, the rules with this. Having done a bit of research, I listened to it, I listened to the opinions, I believe that a committee can pretty much do whatever it wants here, in absence of rules saying to the contrary. I'm open to, I'm open to being corrected on this, I believe that a committee can, can kind of appoint, move, do, you know, issue subcommittees, I mean, we do that all the time. I think that a committee has a wide berth within its organization. So I, I don't know that I agree with the arguments that, that the appointment of Mr. Becker was, is outside of the rule set. I think it is extremely bad form, extremely bad form, and it sets bad precedent. I think it is, was done in a tit-for-tat, and I, I really, I really have not a lot of positive things to better say about the way this was done. And I'm saying this as somebody who, in the vote that caused all of this back and forth, actually, I voted with Mr. Schmidt. I mean, I've voted against Mr. Brown on a, on a lot of the things he's, he's brought forward, but I don't find that anything he, he did warranted this. And if we go down this path, as Ms. Janong said earlier, anytime that, you know, Ms. Boyd or I get into an argument on, about budget, or down the path, you know what, we're just going to start, we're just going to start triangulating and, and taking, taking people out. And that, that I think was what Mr. Hyde's warning here was. So I'm just going to go back to the last bit of this, because I'm torn on it, because I'm from a, a, is this the right thing to do? I think it was not. I mean, there is, two months from now, we're going to, we're going to shake through committees again, there is no reason to do this, in two months, we're going to go through it. But is it allowable by the rules? I think it is. And I also want to note that I think Mr. Brown has served in his capacity with, with admiration. I think Mr. Becker would do an excellent job as chair. I think that Ms. Bergdorf would do an excellent job, and I think Mr. Schmidt would do an excellent job. I think any of those people would do a fine job in this committee, and I really find it unfortunate that, that good people who want to serve their, their community are going down this path as hard as they are. And for my part, for anything, you know, stepping down this path, you know, I, I want us to get off of it. So I'm going to cease my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Schoeff. Next in the queue is Commissioner Becker.
Yes, so, I hate that I'm like, deep into, involved in this specific decision, because my comments are, it's, my comments have nothing to do with me being involved, I guess, is my point. The, the comments that were just made by the commissioner, just spoke about a committee's will, a committee votes for their own chairman, vice chairman, those votes never get passed along and approved by the full commission, they never get passed along, approved by the chairman of the commission. The fact that it is recommended, or the motion that we're talking about right now, is for the full commission to determine if a vote in a committee was valid or not, is, to me, that just, it's, I just 1,000% disagree with it. Not because I'm involved, but because of just, like, just rules and procedures and so forth, this, this makes zero sense. This has zero standing. I would like to ask, I'm not done talking, but I would like to ask Mr. Chairman if the law director agrees with this approach.
Nobody agreed with my opinion that wanted to push this matter further, so this was Mr. Hyde's decision to address this issue. I really had little input after that, after I wrote out my, the legal opinion and disseminated that amongst the commission. I still think there's some aspects of this that aren't correct, but it's the will of the commission.
Trying to, I'm thinking of what words I want to choose here. It would be nice, on a side note, to be able to ask for legal opinion and be comfortable and confident in what's provided to you. And unfortunately, we, we, we're not in that type of situation with the current, the current legal, the current law director. But I do want to touch on, you know, we've got three education committee members who are absent tonight for, I guess, various reasons, and we're voting here who their chairman is going to be? That doesn't make any sense at all. Panic buttons, panic buttons was mentioned, I'm assuming, she said 21st, I'm District 21, if it was directed to me, I just want to address that. That was a well-publicized, the TV crews were here and everything, so I'm not, I'm not quite sure what, where the parallel was, there's apples to oranges there, but, but just going back, the fact that we're even considering having the full commission vote on whether a, a vote within a committee, like, like, look at these committees, I have no idea, if I, if this was happening in Highway, I don't have a clue what's happening behind the scenes, or whatever, in Highway. I would be, I would have zero qualifications to place a vote for that. Legislative, budget, I mean, I, I'm not on those committees, I don't know, I mean, I watched some of the videos, but I don't, I don't, I don't study behind-the-scenes, the emails, whatever, the conflicts, I don't, I'm not qualified to vote on who the chairman is going to be on a committee that I'm not, that I'm not a part of. And I, I don't understand why anybody sitting here tonight would think they would be qualified to vote on who a committee chair, that a committee that they don't serve on. So that goes back to, three of our committee members aren't even here tonight. So, I, I just think, I think this whole thing is, is out of order, but that's, that's my comments for now.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Becker. Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to add some perspective to something that one of the commissioners said. While a lengthy answer he gave when Commissioner Janong asked, it seemed very thorough, but I want to gain, to give perspective to everybody on the fact that those statements, those derogatory statements that were made towards Commissioner Schmidt were not from Mr. Brown, they were from a citizen that was very close to Mr. Brown. So, I don't think that holds water to any of his reasons for doing it. And furthermore, the safety concerns that were stated were decades old, there's been decades worth of pictures of that structure printed over the years that show the safety concern, and it was not a shocker to most people that knew of that place. So, and, and it was also said in comparison with the fact that we were looking at spending millions and millions of dollars on fixing athletic stadiums when we weren't addressing a safety concern. Lives are, lives are at risk here, right? I mean, that's what we're talking about. But that was swept under the rug, and I commend Commissioner Brown for bringing it up. Hopefully, it gets addressed finally, after decades of safety concern where lives were at risk. And, and then, I appreciate her also bringing up the fact that we're considering the replacement, someone who also brought up safety concerns in a public meeting. I mean, what's the difference? We either talk about these things and get them addressed, or we don't, but using them as excuses to throw people off of chairman's, chairmanship, that's, that's ridiculous.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Commissioner Wright.
I appreciate my fellow Commissioner Schmidt taking up for his constituents. I myself am fixing to take up for my constituents. I live within an eighth of a mile where I've lived for over 50 years. People know me in my neighborhood. They come to me with their problems. They have a problem, a security problem, where their kids go to school. If you have a problem, fix it. Don't slide it under the rug, don't hide it, fix it. If there is a issue with security anywhere in this county, for the safety and security of our kids, fix it. Some of you have talked about my passion, it's just scratched the surface. I don't think you will find very many people in this county who is more passionate about the safety and security of the kids in this county. If you have a, if your roof is leaking, do you not fix it? If you have a flat tire, do you keep driving on it, or do you fix it? If you have a security problem in this county, fix it. Commissioner Brown, I appreciate your tenacity, but I look at these people in the eye every day, folks, every day. Every single day, and nothing's been done. If you have a problem, fix it. That's all I'm asking. I'm not asking for much, I'm just asking for a problem to be fixed, and I appreciate anybody that will help me get it fixed. Thank you.
I thank you, Commissioner Pomeroy, next in the queue.
Mr. Chairman, I didn't want to speak tonight. We talked about that, and then we were forced to start, I said, turn a football game on or something. Man, a shell game, that's what we've just seen, a shell game. No disrespect to my commissioner, just spoke, I know him, we're friends, I would call him a friend, he loves and supports his children, he wants them to be safe. But that's not what we're talking about. He did make a comment, if your roof leaks, fix it, but I think the archive building, we, we've known about for a long time, we're not, so not everybody fixes a roof, this body doesn't. Sometimes we just like to play politics. Some guy who everybody thinks is a jerk sat here about two and a half years ago and said eventually the committee system on this group would blow up. Like I said it right here from this chair, because when you get a band together and everybody votes, it's all good when you got that majority. And then some people's feelings get hurt, and now the shoe's on the other foot, and everybody's upset. Everybody's upset that, oh, wait a minute, we didn't have the majority. So now we start screaming about safety, we start screaming about everything we can to There's no need to have committees if their votes don't matter. My good friend, Commissioner over there, I wrote down some of his notes, there is nothing in the rules that say that we can overturn what a committee votes on. Nothing. They vote on stuff every month. They voted to name him chairman, they voted to name the vice chairman, doesn't come back to this body for approval. And if those five to seven people don't think they can operate efficiently with the decision they made, there's a reason why there's not a rule, so they can have the freedom to change it, so they can operate. But yet, we're, oh no, it's, it's, it's somebody on my side now. So that's big bad conservatives, man, we are, we're going to band together, we're going to do more government. And the funny thing is, this is what's hilarious, pretend they didn't vote. I heard, if your feelings get hurt, you- I heard, if your feelings get hurt, you just attack. No, you had to get votes. You had to get a majority. I thought that's what government ran like. I thought when these committees were hand-selected, and Lord knows, I've stood up here for hours and listened to us argue about who we're going to put on committees and citizen boards. Oh my gosh. My heart goes out to those who've tried to bring those, I think I've told you, like, golly. Well, if we have no respect, I mean, it's, it's, it's embarrassing what we do when we, when it's somebody we don't like. But none of that matters right now, because everybody's on there. They were hand-put on there, I don't serve on a single committee, why? Because I talk like this. I guess too much common sense. And I don't play games, I don't walk around like I'm somebody when I'm the nobody. But I do respect the will of the people, and I think the people of Sumner County want to elect people. Some agree with who they elect, some agree with they don't, who they elect, and for them people to have the right to come here and vote in public, and those votes to mean something. So there was a committee, never been to it, never watched it on IT, never went back. But I know my peers came together and had a vote that we have heard from the chairman, Mr. Hyde, who says there's no reason that we, there's nothing legally we can do to overturn it. We've heard from one of our other chairman who said, yeah, I can't find anything. And yet, that's what we're being asked to do. Hey, forget about rules. Forget about procedure. If we don't like what a committee does, we'll just overturn it, because I still think we got thirteen when we get to the chamber. Even though our little cell might break, we still got thirteen when we get to the chamber, so it don't even matter. So if that's the case, and this passes, I'm going to do everything I can to try to get everybody to, I'll tell you, I mean, if you're not, you shouldn't even serve on a committee, just come here and do all the business. Vote right here, all these people, everybody likes staying here until one or two o'clock in the morning. No need to have committees, because what are we going to come in here next? You come in here and say, well, they voted to pass this, and we don't, that vote doesn't count. Heck, I think we had a legislative meeting this month that didn't even have a quorum. And I think we're going to vote on items on this agenda, I'm not, later at night, because from my count, they didn't have a quorum. But we need to continue to do the business, even though we didn't like the way the business that got done, got done, so we'll just have all this distraction. I'm not saying I agree or disagree, I'm saying that that committee voted. There's no rules to say we can't do it, that's exactly what the committees are there for. They want to operate that way, you let them operate, and it's none of the business of this commission, especially when most of the people who voted for this happen to not be here this evening. I'm sorry I didn't scream about the children and safety, I just want to bring it back down to low, low gravy. Do we respect committees, do we respect votes? Or can the majority of us, because the funny thing is, I heard this, if you don't like something, you can just buddy up with people. And you can get enough votes, you can stay around the chairman anymore. And the thing, same thing's being done, which is why this is on the floor here tonight. Hey, we didn't like what the committee did, so let's buddy up, get all our buddies together, and see if we can get thirteen votes to overturn it. That's just the truth. So I will be voting to, I don't even think we should be voting on it, but if I have to, I'll vote to uphold this. And then I do hope we can handle all those safety issues and concerns, but that's not what we're voting about right now.
Thank you, Commissioner Pomeroy. Commissioner Teichner, you've already spoken, I'm going to let.
It's only on the, it's, I, I only spoke on that, uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I spoke on the, the two-thirds, I have not spoken on this, I promise.
That's true, that's fine. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I thank you so much for letting me speak, I understand, it's a long night always when we get a person to speak, especially I can be long-winded sometimes. I try to keep it short. I have a few things I just, I want to make sure is said, because out of the whole commission, and I've said it to him privately, but I, I, I probably respect Mr. Becker just about more than anybody, I, I, just something about him, he, I remember all the way back to where that we stood up here and spoke to Leadership Sumner, he and I, and Dylan, Commissioner Lambeth, and we, we spoke, and there's so much I learned just from him and his tenure and his time here, so I don't have anything negative to say about him at all. And the thing is, is we've got to come to a point where that ultimately, in my heart of hearts, I think that we should, as a body, vote and do this the proper way on allowing committees to make their own decisions, okay? I agree with, with everything that was said by Commissioner Pomeroy. And, well, not everything, but, uh, but on that fact, just being respectful, but the thing is, is I, it's very important we bring this up, because, Mr. Chairman, have you been questioned every single committee, uh, every single commission meeting on why that you or myself on committee on committees have made the decisions that we made in the committee on committees about who we're nominating? Have you been questioned by that process every single time?
Yes.
Okay, I have too. The thing that's interesting, we have citizens that are questioning it, and that's, everyone's right, but this is something that really needs to be said. That has been done since the beginning of commissions and the beginning of legislative bodies has been done that way. Never question committee on committees, whether you're in a Baptist church, Church Christ Church, or you're right here in this body, a committee on committees, they are the nominating committee that brings it forth, that's how it happens. Mr. Hyde, who is the longest standing, and I respect him very much, he said that it has never been done in the history of him being here, I think that should say something, he was in whenever that we were magistrates, and we were able to pass, like, we were able to go serve, serve warrants, and, and, I mean, that's a, that's a, a lo, long, long time. So I'm just saying, it's very worthy of consideration, because no matter how we get passionate, no matter how we don't get passionate, whatever, it comes down to the fact that social media, I've told every one of us, including myself, stay off of it. And the reason we should stay off of it is because it doesn't help for the will of the people, it helps for the will of the mob. And that's the reason we live in a republic and not a democracy. And if we were in a true democracy, the will of the mob, which is what happened unfortunately, because someone got their feelings hurt, is what happened whenever that the chairman was taken out of, of the committee. Now, I very much respect a committee having that decision, it's just never been done. So we had a mob rule that happened, should never have been done, we had to go through the proper procedure, and we got to, we got to respect the folks that we, that we represent out here, no matter how the decision falls. So tonight, we can make that decision, we can, but it needs to be, and we need to stick with whatever it is, whoever, whomever is voted in, needs to be supported. It looks like there's two on the table, but regardless of if it's legal or not, actually, speaking back to Commissioner Becker's comment, I think he really was wise on what he said, he said he didn't think it had precedents. And unfortunately, he probably won't be able to say this back, so I don't want to say anything that is too argumentative, because I respect him so much. But all, my reasoning for wanting this vote and for agreeing with this vote is because with its never being done before, if it had been the committee on committees, I think that it should stay with the committee on committees, and I think whoever's nominated is whoever's nominated, that's the way it's done. And that, that may not be popular, but that's the, the law. And therefore, if this has never been set, there's not, there's not, uh, it's never been done before, so there's not a precedent set. I also have to say, thank God, that when my children call me a name I don't like, that I don't change the way I parent. So whenever I've been, I've been called on social media, even by Chairman Brown, something I didn't like, but maybe he was right. But it's okay, I love him. I would never vote against my principle on a whimsical decision to go against someone who is serving the people. He's worn the uniform to complete, to protect our country and our constitution, and then we go against him just by the fact of saying, well, no, 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 it's not constitutional to do that, we're not, it's not against, it's, it's against our laws, why we have the power in the committee? We've never done it, so I want to come back to say that we would rather, we talk about passion, but unfortunately, what we're saying here, folks, we would rather remove a chairman than to address an issue of safety concern against children. That breaks my heart. That's where it comes down to, because that was what the argument was given tonight. If we go back for the record, it was stated that something was said negative against this person, against them on social media, we've all had it done. It's unfortunate, I don't want anybody to have something as negative as that about them. But secondly, it came down to saying it should be an ethics complaint. I think the ethics complaint should be the fact that if I go to the mechanic and I get someone to tell me that my car's not running right, and it needs a, you know, a new air conditioner, it needs a, you know, needs oil in it, if I go and get him fired because he told me something was wrong with it, instead of fixing the car, that's the problem. I know we're not talking about it, but that's where, that is the reasoning behind throwing out Commissioner Brown. As much as I appreciate and care about, uh, Commissioner Becker, and I told him, uh, because I wouldn't do it any other way, I didn't get a chance to speak with, uh, with Chairman Brown, or Commissioner Brown, but I'm going to support that he remains through proper procedure, whatever that looks like, and then it should be up to the committee, I do believe, for them to make that decision, whatever it is. And we should stay out of it at that point, but since it's never been done, I ask the commission, go back through, revisit this, and do it the proper procedure, and I'm going to vote for Mr. Brown.
Commissioner Teichner, uh, next up is Commissioner Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think a lot of this started off with the fact that somebody was called a name. I've been called a Nazi by many people, many people. Been called a communist, been called a dictator. And here, for thirty years, I fought against those kinds of regimes. I don't see how in the world I could be one of those. I've also been called a racist. I taught in two minority high schools where it's eighty percent black, and the other one was ninety-five percent black. I'm a missionary to Sierra Leone, African country. I don't think I can be a racist, as far as that's concerned with black folks. As far as the books were concerned, which was the first thing that our commissioner over here brought up, I didn't have a listing of any books, I don't care if they were pornography or whatever, there were no books there. They wanted two hundred thousand dollars, a round number, a round number. Not one hundred and fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and sixty-nine, nothing like that, just a round number. I finally got two-thirds of that listing, that's whenever I put it back on. The photos that were put up on the website, I did not direct those to be put up on the website, I put, I asked that they be distributed to the committee members, and we were going to discuss it that way. I was surprised, whenever one of the Board of Education members told me that they were on the website, that's when I had it directed, taken down. Been up for six hours. Then after, we had legal review of what took place in the Education Committee. I did a disservice to our law director, I gave him fifteen minutes to come up with a decision on a precedent that Mr. Hyde had meant, admitted he'd never seen in thirty-one years. That was my fault. We had an improper motion, we had an improper vote, and as I said, that was my fault, I apologize for that. But after we have had a review, we find out that this was not something that should have been done. And again, as Commissioner Teichner brought up, and I was going to bring it up too, we live in a republic where law and order are supposed to be what governs our country. We have a constitution, we don't have a mob. Mobs can take things from you just because they have the majority. Mr. Hyde mentioned during the Education Committee that usually, and, and also the law director said that the term should be co-terminous with the year in which they were elected. That's what it looks like our law director finally came up and, and said. But I'm going to still continue to fight for things that are improper. Now, that might be something that Commissioner Schmidt does not see as necessary, but I'm going to continue to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Uh, next in the queue is Commissioner Rogers has not spoke, I know, he's, um, already spoken to this once, so we're going to, Commissioner Rogers would be next. Commissioner Rogers has called the question, who is the second on that, second by Commissioner Jones. Uh, all right, all in favor say, well, let's put this on the board, because it takes sixteen votes. A yes vote would be to call the question in debate, a no vote would be to continue, um, speaking. All right, call for the question fails. Next in the queue, um, this is going to be, uh, go to Commissioner Harrison, technically, was next, was it Harrison or Shoff? All right, Commissioner Shoff.
Yeah, I almost always vote to call the question, but I, um, because there's, we, we talked a whole lot, we talked a lot, but, uh, very little, I think, moving toward a, a solution here, so I'm going to offer a solution, um, I'm going to offer an amendment. And that amendment is based on, uh, I, I found Mr. Becker's points compelling. I, I would like to, uh, refer this back to committee, uh, back to the Education Committee, and I'll tell you why. The whole reason this was, this has caused such a problem is that it was brought up with very little notice, with no notice. To, this would be, that was the first time that had happened, this will be the first time that, you know, to my understanding, that we would basically be overriding a, uh, what is designed to be a committee internal process. So I think there's a, I don't think anything breaks if we don't take this vote tonight. I think we can refer this back to the committee, everybody knows what's going on now, people can have their say in that committee, and let's just do a little do-over.
All right. County attorney would like to.
If you're going to do that and try and stay within the spirit of Roberts rules, then I would also suggest putting in the notice the election of a chairman. That's going to be an integral part of this whole thing.
Uh, yeah, I, I'd make that part of the, uh, the amendment here.
The amendment is to refer this back to the Education Committee with the stipulation that the agenda is noticed for the election of a chairman. And that was seconded by Commissioner Becker. State your point.
On who the official chair is.
That's what a vice chair is for, Mr. Jones.
So they would run that meeting?
Correct. So I see that we have three commissioners in the queue, Commissioners Harrison, four, Rogers. Commissioner Rogers, are you speaking to the amendment or the main motion? Okay, Commissioner Schmidt, are you speaking to the amendment or the main motion? Are you speaking to the amendment or the main motion then? Okay, we'll wait for it. Commissioner Teichner, are you speaking to the amendment or the main motion? All right, Commissioner Teichner.
I believe this actually accomplishes exactly, I'm on, I believe this accomplishes exactly what I, I feel is the best, the best rule, that way it's, that way it's properly notified. So no matter how it falls, it still ultimately comes down to the, the proper procedure, and I, I appreciate the amendment.
All right. Commissioner, Commissioner Harrison, are you in the queue for the amendment or the main motion?
Actually, both.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Harrison, my apologies.
So, no, that's okay. So my question would be, as.
So my question would be, as to the amendment, what happens if you don't have a quorum? We're right back where we started.
Talking about a quorum?
For education.
For the Education Committee? I mean, that's any meeting, so that's just the rescue take. All right. So, yes, and they're on the main motion. All right, so we're going to put this on the board, the motion to refer, is that a 13 or 16 vote? I think your motion to refer is 16, I believe, so it is a higher threshold, it would need 16 votes to be sent back to education. All right, let's go and put this on the board. All right, motion fails to carry. We are back to the main motion. Commissioner Rogers.
Well, I'll call the question yet again.
All right, question has been called. Is there a second? It's seconded by Commissioner Jones. Let's put that on the board.
This is a call for the question.
Means it ends debate.
I'm going to.
State your point, yes.
I think Commissioner Schmidt was in the queue, Commissioner Rogers, Rogers, since Mr. Schmidt had asked. I would like to hear it, Mr. Schmidt.
Technically, Commissioner Rogers was first, and they both had spoken about it, so, I mean, technically, I'm going to overrule that, Commissioner Rogers was first, so we're going to vote on his amendment first. Yeah.
Each commissioner records their vote.
No, we're on the motion for, call the question. All right, motion fails. We are back to the main motion, and Commissioner Schmidt, what is yours?
I just, you know, I think, and I'm going to respectfully say, I think a lot of my fellow commissioners here tonight are missing the point.
Is that a simple majority or a call question?
No, it's a 2/3 majority.
It's 2/3.
Continue.
This has not, nothing to do with me being butthurt over a comment on social media. You asked how this all led up to where we are. So, you know, I had, I just had a constituent from my district while we're sitting here want to share her concerns. Basically, you know, the chairman of education has the full responsibility to support the will of the committee. When he went to budget and told them to send the school amendment back because he did not like it, because he didn't like the will of the committee. My whole position has been on the library books itself is here, look, I think people are missing the point. We have librarians and we have school board that are tasked to picking these books. Why, I would love to have all the time in the world to pick books, that's just not in our job description. So my point is, is, you know, when he went and added this to the full commission last month to the agenda, it left people confused, left citizens confused, why he was against it, but I had no knowledge that he was going to bring it to the full commission until the night it was, you know, Mr. Hyde had announced it. So I had no idea what changed his mind from wanting to know the list of books, what we were getting to adding it. And I don't, I can't speak for my fellow Education Committee members, but I don't think they knew what his reasons were for adding it. The other thing is really, you know, again, and I made some notes, it's not a retaliatory move. This is, again, has to do with communication with the committee members and explaining, you know, why this was added. More importantly, this has to do with citizens' concerns. This has nothing to do with me, whether I like him or I dislike him, or I like this guy or dislike that guy. This has to do with citizens' concerns. We were elected to listen to them. I mean, it's getting to the point, you know, some citizens, you know, are like, well, what's next? We're going to pick out the chicken nuggets that the cafeteria is going to start serving? Are we going to get down to that nitpicky? Our job is to yea or nay, send it to budget. Then it goes from budget, it comes here to the full commission, then we can debate on what books are there or not there. But the citizens had legitimate concerns. People that send their children to the schools in question where the books are going are going to be punished and delayed of not having books because there's a few, you know, potentially a few bad apples that we don't know. My whole point is, we've got to listen to the citizens. The citizens want their concerns listened to, that's why we're here, that's why I come here, why I come here every month, every week in some circumstances for committee meetings, because they have concerns. It is my job to bring their concerns there. Whether they agree with me or I agree with them has no bearing. I mean, honestly, it would have been easy for me just to shut my mouth, right? Because I wouldn't get all the backlash, I wouldn't, but it is what it is. The citizens have concerns, the citizens must be listened to. And I know people are going to start, you know, making all these false accusations that I'm sitting here because I'm mad. I'm not mad. I'm upset for the citizens that they're not being heard for several months, over and over and over, and that's why we're here today. And that's why it was brought up on Education Committee. I commend him for all his services. I think he's done a great job for his country, you know, that's great, but that has, his resume has nothing to do with why we are here. We are here, again, for the citizens. The issue, and I'll finish up, the issue with the school safety was brought up because I don't know who.
I'm going to, way down the road. I, I'm sorry. If we're here for the citizens, we've got a huge agenda we need to get through, and we've spent more time on this one item than we have the whole agenda. I ask that we move on.
I'm going to rule in your favor, Commissioner Rogers.
Okay. I just, I just think it's a reminder that we are here for the citizens, not for our egos and, you know, to point blame.
Thank you, Commissioner Schmidt. Commissioner Palmeroy.
But I, as much as I agree with Mr. Rogers, he did, and I voted to support calling the question every time, but again, I think votes matter. But I heard something that's a little weird. I've always thought this is weird, you know, since I've been serving. I don't know the different, it's, you know, the saying that perspective is reality. So when the people show up and get loud, and it's the people who support you and you agree with those people, you're doing the will of the people. If the people get loud and you vote on the other side of that than a mob one, I don't know how you get it both ways with that. The differenceator is, we then vote. So I don't know if these mobs showed up, I don't think my.
Commissioner Palmeroy, I'm not sure how that relates.
Well, I'm going to say, because the comment was that this needs to be voted on by this body, because what was happening was the will of the mob was, that was a quote, the will of the mob was done at our Education Committee. That was the quote. So I'm saying, I don't know if it's the will of the mob. I think different citizens out here have different opinions on different issues. They all speak, and then when they come, the elected officials vote. A vote was took, a vote was passed, and it happened. You can spin it, you can stand up and talk about it, you can say you didn't like, this makes me feel better, it doesn't. It was spoken upon, it was in the agenda, it got added to the agenda and voted on, like we do all the time, like we're doing with this motion from Mr. Hyde. So let's vote on it. And then if I don't like it, I don't like, but you got to vote. But to say that you're not just, this retaliatory and all these comments, the only reason why we're talking about this is retaliatory, because the committee voted. And I don't think a mob was in the Education Committee. I think it was some other commissioners that I respect, so I won't, I hope we can call this question.
Thank you, Commissioner Palmeroy. Commissioner Schoeff.
Yeah, this is pretty ironic, though, because I think the whole argument from the commissioner was just speaking was that we shouldn't be voting on this because it's inappropriate to vote in this body and overrule committee. And I agree, I have been convinced on that. So I'm going to try again, and now I'm going to make it a totally different motion, I'm going to make a motion to defer this back to legislature, or to, to education.
With the same stipulation?
With the same stipulation. So we have a motion by Commissioner Schoeff, a second by Commissioner Becker, that this be deferred back to education, and that there is, there'd be no debate on this one, I believe, if I'm correct.
Mr. Chairman, if that vote goes the same way, will we bring it back here, or are we going to put in our resolution to def- we agree not to bring it back?
No. The, the deferral, the motion is to defer this back to education, that education for the agenda on July the 1st would be noticed with an agenda item of election of a chairman. That is the, that is the, that's the amendment.
Regardless of what that election is, are we not going to vote to?
I'll make that clear, yes. I mean, I make that clear. Yes, we, we will treat it just like we treat every, the whole, the whole argument over here is that, you know, we're, we're all doing this bad, and so we're going to send, I want to send it back. And, but we got people who were, who were arguing for that we shouldn't be voting on it, voting against my amendment, so it's just crazy. So let's do this.
So there is no more debate. I'm going to restate the motion. The motion is to defer back to the Education Committee with properly being noticed for the election of the chairman of said committee. That is the motion. So, all right, and this would be a 13-vote majority? All right, Madam Clerk, would you put that on the board? Sorry, folks.
Anyone not voting wishing to vote.
I know, I'm going to vote to.
Mr. Chairman, I would have to walk the hook, I'll change my ideas.
All right, so with Commissioner Harrison's vote, is that 13 votes in the affirmative?
Harrison goes.
All right, I'm abstaining on that one. All right, so this is being sent.
That's where he misses. You had voted.
He changed his vote to yes, to defer back to education. So, all right, this matter is settled. Now we are on to written reports to be filed by the county officials.
Before I move, Mr. Chairman.
Well, we're going to get there.
We've got number four to do.
Oh, excuse, excuse, why do you have one more thing we're going to take, and we can take a quick break? We're just, no, that, that amendment, yes, we're done, we're done. All right, item number four is to move the July commission meeting date to the 5th Monday, which would be the 29th because of the budget hearings and the budget committees. So I'll entertain a motion to do that. So moved by Commissioner Schoeff, seconded by Commissioner Becker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we got something done. All right, without objection, I think I heard a request for a, it's going to be the 5th Monday of July, which was July 29th at 7:00 PM here in this chamber, that's the vote we just took. Any other questions or confusion? All right. Without objection, I heard a request for a five-minute recess. We will take a five-minute recess. We will take a five-minute recess. Commissioner Shoef. We're going to call this meeting back to order. If there's any commissioners out in the hall, if they can come back in, please. All right. Report of the county officials, written reports to be filed by the county officials. They should be in your packet. All right. Notaries, let's put it on the board. Madam Clerk. There we go. Thank you. It's getting a little, I got excited. All right. Notaries pass. It seems like we're missing a few commissioners.
Anyone not voting wishing to vote?
Anyone not voting on the notaries that can wish to vote? Commissioners Wright and Moss. Verbal yes for Commissioner Wright? Is that a verbal yes for Commissioner Moss on the notaries? We'll note them verbal yeses for Commissioners Wright and Moss.
Yes, everybody voted.
Commissioner Teichner is missing, but he'll join us hopefully momentarily. All right. All right. Reports of the standing committees. Health and Emergency Service Committee, it doesn't look like there's anything there or the Education Committee, so we'll move on.
I should approve, approve, please, for a second.
All right. We have a motion to group and approve. We had a second. And all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right. General Ops, we skipped a highway committee. It doesn't look like there's a report, so we're going to move on. Committee on Committees.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item one, Library Board. Mike Bryan, Gallatin, through your term, I so move.
All right. A motion by Commissioner Miller. We have a second by Commissioner Jones. Let's go ahead and put this on the board. Is there somebody in the queue? No, I don't see, Commissioner Klein's in the queue. My apologies, Commissioner Klein.
Mr. Chairman, if the commission will indulge me for a few moments, I would like to tell you about my friend, Mike Bryan. I've known Mike for almost twenty-five years. He has four children. I have four children. They're the same age roughly, and they grew up together. We've sung together, worked together, laughed together, cried together. I've never met a man who could go through so many changes in his life so gracefully. And his experience in many, many industries would be a great asset to the Library Board. I know there are no requirements for what that job entails, but the man has patience of a saint. He is well thought through. He's kind. He's generous. And I would ask everyone here to get past all of the stuff that we're going through and needing to see all thirty-six members who have put their names forward. We don't have thirty-six positions on the Library Board. We only have a few left. If we bring Mike Bryan on to the board, we will be blessed because he is a man of integrity and character. And I can't think of anybody else who I would want on that board more. If I know Mike, and I have not spoken to him about this issue at all, but if I know Mike, he's doing this for the same reason a lot of us became commissioners, because he wants to give back to the county that has helped bless him in so many ways. He wants to give back. So, I would encourage a yes vote for Mike Bryan. I am definitely voting yes.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Klein. Next in the queue is Commissioner Becker.
Yeah. I think I mentioned it last month. I, my preference, my strong preference would be to, and I missed the meeting earlier this year for illness, but if there's four openings, to have four nominations and so forth. But I won't labor that point. But what I would like to mention is, well, first, I'd like to also thank Chairman for sending out that list this morning, so I appreciate that. The only reason the list is that long is because the openings have been there for so long. But regardless, I met Mr. Bryan. He's served on the, I've served as the chair of the nonprofit allocation committee the past few years, and Mr. Bryan has served on it the past, I think, two years. And I have found him to be, through that process, to be very high quality, provided valuable input, a very respectful, good listener. And so, I have no issues of voting for Mr. Bryan tonight to fill this spot. I would like to maybe make a request for next, if my math is right, and if he is voted in, I think that leaves three. So, then, I would like to maybe, next time, have three people. But, you know, that's up to the Committee on Committees, obviously. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Becker. Commissioner Schmidt, you're next in the queue.
This is, this is not a criticism of anything. I'm just going to go through this real quick. I did receive some concern from a citizen. She's a spouse of a candidate. She's just kind of confused. And I said, well, I'll bring it to the floor just for the record and see, you know, what we can come up with. But I guess her husband was an educator nearly forty-one years, twenty-five years, as a history teacher, county teacher of the year, published author, served as president of Sumner County Historical Society, Westmoreland Chamber of Commerce. She's just concerned that, you know, she hasn't heard his name discussed as a potential board member. And the biggest concern.
Mr. Chairman, we do this every, every time. We're talking about this individual when we're trying to talk about another individual. You're all on the appointment of this one individual. I'm not trying to be harsh, but that's the. All right. I'm going to, I'm going to let that point of order stand. So, Mr. Schmidt, we're going to get to the main motion. So, we're going to speak to the candidates.
All right. Well, I'll finish up. It's just Westmoreland seems to be lacking representation for that. And I agree with her. That's all I had to say.
Hey, when we did have somebody from Westmoreland that got voted down. So, just to let you know that.
No, like I said, it wasn't a criticism, it's just bringing her concerns for.
Sure, yeah. And we've had people from Westmoreland been voted down by this body. So, there has been representation. It's just not been voted through. All right. Seeing Commissioner Teichner.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I was just going to say, I wasn't here for that committee, and I've been out of town. And I want to apologize. I've had some emails. I think I've gotten back almost all the phone calls. But I had a lot come to me that I didn't get to respond to and everybody. I said, number one, sorry about that. But the reason I'm mentioning that is because I didn't get to properly interview Mike Bryan. But when he came and spoke, I just want to commend and just say how much I appreciate the transparency from him and how much I appreciate the Committee on Committees bringing forth somebody that I think that would be a tremendous asset to our library system. And I would love to have him on there. So, I hope there's a yes vote, even though that I wasn't one of the ones that nominated him. I'm definitely going to be one voting for him. So, thank you.
All right. Seeing nobody else in the queue. We're going to put this on the board.
Each commissioner, record your vote.
All right. Motion carries. Legislative Committee. Commissioner Klein. We did remove item twenty-four oh six dash oh nine.
That's right.
So, we'll go to.
So, twenty-four oh six ten. Give me a second to pull it up here. Sorry. Mr. Chairman, this is a resolution, twenty-four oh six dash ten, approving a lease with Shackle Island Volunteer Fire Department. I so move.
Motion by Commissioner Klein. Thinking second by Commissioner Rogers. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
This is twenty-four oh six dash eleven, a resolution creating the Election Commission Negotiation Ad Hoc Committee, and I so move.
There was a. Mr. Chairman, I have a question. I'm getting ready to address that, Commissioner Harrison. There was a request to go into executive session, so I'm going to move us into executive session in room one twelve. If the commission can go there, and I guess we'll, so. All right. Notaries pass. It seems like we're missing a few commissioners.
Anyone not voting wishing to vote?
Anyone not voting on the notaries that can wish to vote? Commissioners Wright and Moss. Yes. Are you verbal yes for Commissioner Wright? Is that a verbal yes for Commissioner Moss? On the notaries? We'll note them verbal yeses for Commissioners Wright and Moss.
Yes, everybody voted.
Commissioner Teichner is missing, but he'll join us hopefully momentarily. All right. All right. Reports of the standing committees. Health and Emergency Service Committee, it doesn't look like there's anything there or the Education Committee, so we'll move on. Committee on Committees. Thank you, Commissioner Klein. Next in the queue is Commissioner Becker.
Yeah. I think I mentioned it last month. I, my preference, my strong preference would be to, and I missed the meeting earlier this year for illness, but if there's four openings, to have four nominations and so forth. But I won't, I won't labor that point. But what I would like to mention is, well, first, I'd like to also thank Chairman for sending out that list this morning, so I appreciate that. The only reason the list is that long is because the openings have been there for so long. But regardless, I met Mr. Bryan. He's served on the, I've served as the chair of the nonprofit allocation committee the past few years, and Mr. Bryan has served on it the past, I think, two years. And I have found him to be, through that process, to be very high quality, provided valuable input, a very respectful, good listener. And so, I have no issues of voting for Mr. Bryan tonight to fill this spot. I would like to maybe make a request for next, if my math is right, and if he is voted in, I think that leaves three. So, then, I would like to maybe, next time, have three people. But, you know, that's up to the Committee on Committees, obviously. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Becker. Commissioner Schmidt, you're next in the queue.
This is, this is not a criticism of anything. I'm just going to go through this real quick. I did receive some concern from a citizen. She's a spouse of a candidate. She's just kind of confused. And I said, well, I'll bring it to the floor just for the record and see, you know, what we can come up with. But I guess her husband was an educator nearly forty-one years, twenty-five years as a history teacher, county teacher of the year, published author, served as president of Sumner County Historical Society, Westmoreland Chamber of Commerce. She's just concerned that, you know, she hasn't heard his name discussed as a potential board member. And the biggest concern.
Mr. Chairman, we do this every, every time. We're talking about this individual when we're trying to talk about another individual. You're all on the appointment of this one individual. I'm not trying to be harsh, but that's the. All right. I'm going to, I'm going to let that point of order stand. So, Mr. Schmidt, we're going to get to the main motion. So, we're going to speak to the candidates.
All right. Well, I'll finish up. It's just Westmoreland seems to be lacking representation for that. And I agree with her. That's all I had to say.
Hey, when we did have somebody from Westmoreland that got voted down. So, just to let you know that.
No, I, like I said, it wasn't a criticism, it's just bringing her concerns for.
Sure, yeah. And we've had people from Westmoreland been voted down by this body. So, there has been representation. It's just not been voted through. All right. Seeing Commissioner Teichner. All right, we're back on 2406-11. Aye. Coach Pruitt is no longer the coach of the Vols. All right, we got a motion approved by Commissioner Becker, second by Commissioner Shoef. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We've already disposed of item 2406-12, so... We have a motion to group and approve budget.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Harris. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion to adjourn by Commissioner Becker, second by Commissioner Palmeroy. All in favor say aye. Any opposed?